Good evening and welcome to the July 14, 2014 Burnsville Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome Commissioners, Staff.
Thank you.
Everybody in our viewing and listening audience. The meeting will now be called to order. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move it, Chair.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Singh, seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the swearing in of new Commissioners. I believe we have one this.
We do. Mr. Benke, if you can meet me over there. Commissioners, Steve Benke has been appointed as your new alternate. Commissioner Julick did not seek reappointment, so Steve is going to be sworn in. If you can raise your right hand, repeat after me as we go through this. "I, Steve Benke, do solemnly swear."
"I, Steve Benke, do solemnly swear."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota."
"And faithfully will discharge the duties as a member of the Burnsville Planning Commission of the City of Burnsville."
"And faithfully will discharge the duties as a member of the Burnsville Planning Commission of the City of Burnsville."
"In the County of Dakota and State of Minnesota."
"In the County of Dakota and the State of Minnesota."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
And I'll have you sign this, either one. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. (applause). I'd like to give a welcome to the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Beaver.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 23, 2014 hearing, meeting. Commissioners, any changes, corrections? Staff?
None from staff.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Bradrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 5-0. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, application for United Properties for a preliminary and final plat of a one lot subdivision to be known as Applewood Point of Burnsville and a PUD amendment for construction of a 44-unit senior cooperative at the northwest corner of Burnsville Parkway and 125th Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, as you are aware, United Properties has submitted an application for development of this site. They are looking at 44 units of owner-occupied condominiums. It would be a ground-up building, underground parking. The applicant, as of last week, asked that this item be continued by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission is obligated to take public comment. It comes up tonight. We won't be going through the plans because they will be subject to change. The applicant did not give a date when they'd like this revisited, so we will re-notify all the adjacent property owners, just as we did tonight. So if you received a card in the mail or your property was on that list, when this comes back to the Planning Commission, you'll receive another card. I expect the earliest would be September for this to return, but again, that's subject to change. We'll open it for public comment, and I do have my business cards. I'll hand out a few of those. If people are interested in taking a look at the plans that are currently submitted, that's part of the public record.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Slania. With that then, I would open the public record. Anybody who wishes to comment or, at this point, can step forward and provide your name and address, and we will take your comment or comments at this time.
Your name is Joe Wagner.
Go, sorry. Stand up at the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address, please.
Joe Wagner, 150 East Burnsville Parkway, Unit A406.
Okay.
And basically, I haven't seen any plans or specs, so I'm kind of curious to see what they are. I'm on the top level, fourth level, and I face Minneapolis with pretty good views, so I'm really concerned about that to see, you know, how that could affect the marketability or value of my home. And I noticed that, I researched some of the Applewood homes, they have the triangle roofs, and, you know, I have, there's my building and then there's Nicklet right across from Cub Foods, they have the flat roof. So I was, you know, seeing, I wanted to know how high those roofs go and if there's a compromise for a flat roof for the Applewood. That's pretty much what I'm interested in, you know, just to see what it looks like.
All right, Mr. Wagner. Thank you.
There was one more thing I noticed, actually, I just thought of, they were going to share a garage with us. Is that still kind of in the plans? Because we have two garages, G1 and G2, and I was just wondering if that's the case, like, can we share something with them? Like, we don't have a party room or anything like that. Barely have a parking lot. I mean, I've been told three times, we don't have a parking lot. And so, like, if they're going to use some of our amenities, is there a compromise, you know, if maybe we can use some of theirs, too? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it?
Thanks. Anybody else have any comments or questions to pose at this time?
Mr. Chair, before we take a motion, I'll get in touch with Mr. Wagner, get him some plans. I do have information on the height and how that would affect views out of Uptown Landing. I don't want to get into the parking too much because I expect the plans will change, but the intent was to provide some shared parking, both in the second garage for Uptown Landing and out on First Avenue, which is a public street. So the city's aware of some of those concerns, and I can get you up to speed on that.
Thank you, Mr. Slania, for providing us with that information. Anybody else? All right. With that, I guess I'd entertain a motion to continue.
Chair, Commissioners, I move that we continue the application for United Properties for a time to be set.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Singh, second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. That will be continued to another date, unknown at this time. The next item is a public hearing. Freedom Enterprises LLC for a conditional use permit amendment for a time extension to complete the building expansion at 2000 Highway 13 Frontage Road North.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, this is also a public hearing. The application in front of you tonight, it will soon be in front of you, is by Freedom Enterprises LLC. It is a conditional use permit amendment. It is specifically for a time extension. The property is known as Burnsville Motors. Freedom Enterprises is the entity that owns the property. It is located on the north side of Highway 13. Here's County Road 5. Here's the frontage road as it existed prior to the construction that's underway at this time. Again, here's a look at the site, and again, County Road 5, frontage road pre-construction. There was an access point here, an access point here. As outlined in the background, in 2003, the property owner received approval for construction of a building. The building is located in the B3 zoning district, and subject to those requirements, the minimum size for that building, or, excuse me, for any building, any new building in the B3 district, B4 district, is 10,000 square feet. At that time, the property owner was proposing a 7,700-square-foot building. Their intent was to grow over time. They were looking to purchase a dealer franchise of some kind. Their intention was to grow and expand, and they expected by 2010, which would have been seven years, to have the ability, or the resources, I would say, to construct a 2,300-square-foot addition, getting them up to that minimum size. Just some dates to keep in mind with this. The original conditional use permit was back in 2003, and again, 7,700 square feet have been constructed, so we're at a deficit of approximately 2,300 square feet. The original deadline was January 28 of 2010, based on the original approvals. In 2009, the applicant returned to the City Council requesting another extension. After much discussion, staff was only supportive of a three-to-five-year time span, and that second extension actually came in two parts. The first was a deadline to have construction documents in by the applicant. That deadline was January of 2014. Get the construction drawings in, make sure the applicant was on the right track and on board with the extension, with the construction, and the second part of that deadline was to have the building addition up and completed by January of 2015. The plans have not yet been submitted. It's likely the applicant at this time is not pursuing that January 2015 deadline. Just a brief history on the project. The site, all total, was just under four acres in size. It provided a significant amount of green space, 57% with the initial design. This is plans from the original submittal in 2002, and this was what was constructed, the building here, the proposed addition in this area. You can see there's stormwater pond on-site, substantial green space was provided. They had proposed roughly 130 parking spaces with this design, understanding that there were improvements to be done with County Road 5 and 13. The original intent was to have the addition complete prior to that construction. There were obviously economic downturns, which I believe is why the applicant came back in 2009, rather than pursuing the addition at that time. As part of the 5 and 13 interchange project, there were, there was land that was taken by the city, excuse me, by Dakota County as part of the project. There was 27,000 square feet of additional right-of-way that was taken as part of the project. The applicant, the property owner, I should say, is in negotiations with Dakota County as far as compensation from that. That is an ongoing process. So the total site was reduced from 3.9 acres to 3.2 acres. It's important to keep in mind, none of the improvements, or, excuse me, none of the taking as part of the interchange affected the area anticipated for the addition. I have another image that I'll show you, some impacts to this south and east property line and on this side of the site, and we'll get to that in a minute. I apologize for the poor quality. This is the same design. This is topography information for the 2002. This is the proposed building. This is the addition. This is the site. What you see in yellow are the proposed improvements for the interchange. So let me just start down here. As I said, there was a frontage road in this area. This has now been eliminated, as with these properties down here. This is going to be an on-ramp for Highway 13. So to access the site or to access this frontage road, all traffic will come up here and start heading west. There will be an access point here, and this frontage road, small frontage road, will cul-de-sac right here to connect to this access. This point has been eliminated, and there will be significant grade impacts with the site sitting much lower than this intersection. So these red lines are retaining walls that will be, how should I say, the site will sit lower than the interchange and lower than this entrance ramp. Let's see. Traffic on the frontage road will continue to go east by coming back up here, back to the signal, and then crossing this way, but again, there will be no access to the site here or here. As noted in the packet, the applicant requested a time extension until 2029 for the improvement, obviously stating concerns with the 5 and 13 project. Staff is unable to support that, understanding there have been impacts to the area, there have been, you know, construction in the area and so forth. It was the intent with the original application that the addition be in and completed prior to 5 and 13 occurring. Certainly, nobody anticipated the downturn in the market. Staff at this time is proposing an extension of four years, or assuming that the original deadline was construction by 2015, it would be an extension of three years out to January of 2018. That will be 15 years from the original construction date. Certainly, neither staff nor the Planning Commission or Council can necessarily dictate what will happen in 2018, but we wanted to show for the record, at this point, we're not supportive of additional extensions. And I guess that would be, that would be it, Commissioners. I do have additional slides if we need to get into the discussion of the larger picture of 5 and 13. I have those slides available. With that, Commissioners, it is a public hearing, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Commissioners, any questions at this point from Mr. Slania?
I just have a couple.
Commissioner Benke.
Mr. Slania, was there any discussion with the landowner of what the original use for that additional space was going to be?
I believe, I had it in my notes, I believe it, part of it was to be office, part of it was to be additional tech area. If you can see on the image, the garage service doors are located on the north side of the building. The front is showroom. I know this area is office, so I'm not sure if it would be vehicle maintenance, storage, office, and so forth.
But with that said, your comments in Planning Commission, in the planning considerations, was they weren't really interested in putting the building up to use that space for any other use?
Correct. At this time, they're seeking the extension. They don't see, from their standpoint, that it's feasible to pursue the addition at this time.
Thank you. Just a quick question that you may or may not know. Do you know what the scheduled completion date is for the 13-5 interchange, roughly?
I can say substantially, we're looking for completion by, or operation by, the end of this construction year, so November of 2014, or, excuse me, November of 2015. I'm not sure when the details, such as the landscaping and so forth, will be complete and active. It will be, it will be the rest of this season, for sure.
Okay. So basically, a year and a half roughly from now?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, is the applicant firm on the 2029 date, or are they willing to work with the city?
I would say the applicants would prefer as much time as they could get at this point. I don't, as far as what that in-between number is, I don't want to speak on their behalf.
The applicant knew of the construction, construction of Highway 13 County 5.
Correct.
They knew of this. And were there any, other than the construction, were there any other hardships that were imposed on the applicant, say, by the county or the city, as far as you're aware?
Certainly, the site has been impacted. I do have an image somewhere in here. Okay, maybe I don't. As far as, well, I'll just use this for example. Again, there will be significant topography changes. Right now, the site is somewhat visible from this intersection, from Highway 13. 13 will be going under 5, so obviously, there's significant retaining walls there and so forth that traffic on 13 will no longer see the site unless you are off of 13, or getting off of 13. I would say the second would be the access to the site. Originally, traffic went essentially right by the front door. I know that was a concern by the property owner, that now access is really coming in from behind and coming past the building, rather than going essentially right by their front door, right by the showroom. I would say there's certainly other inconveniences with restricted lanes and construction, traffic, and so forth. I can say the, there was right-of-way, or, excuse me, property taken by Dakota County. There were temporary construction easements and some other items that have been worked, they are working through compensation for that with Dakota County.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Chris, there's no one here representing.
I don't see Jeff. Are you representing Burnsville Motors? No, I don't see anybody.
The original plan showed the addition to the immediate east of the building. I spent some time around there. There's nothing, the way the building was built, that suggests that the addition is planned there. I didn't know if something had changed, like that they were going to go north. I guess the best example I've got, if you look at the, we just approved the expansion of the parking ramp at Heart of the City, and, you know, you can tell from the side of the building, the side of the parking ramp, that, you know, the facade was not put on, and so the building looks pretty complete on the three sides, so I was hoping to ask the applicant that something had changed, if they had planned to go to the north for some sort of access, but I guess that's not possible. So I'm just not sure what the plan would be. To bring in a franchise, I would think the building would have to be, if you think about the other franchise holder dealerships we have in town, the building would be substantially bigger than that. I have one kind of a clarification question. We recently approved the application for Enterprise. And is that a different zoning? Is that, is that not B? That's the difference there.
Great question, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Enterprise was located on the east side of 35W and 13. That is Zone B3. So it is a different zoning district. For, I'm trying to, since maybe 2000, 2001, not long before this project, the city instigated the 10,000-square-foot minimum building size just for B4.
And that, and all of B4 is in the MRQ?
Not all of it. There is some B4 zoning on the south side of Highway 13, so would not necessarily be in the MRQ, but a lot of the B4 district is from 35W West.
And that was in place prior to the construction of this building, obviously, because the CUP required, okay.
That is correct.
So at this point, the staff still, your suggestion is that, at this point, we extend the timeframe to 2018 with no extensions, and so can we talk worst-case scenario, what happens? The city pulls the conditional use permit? What's the next step?
Correct. There, and again, this is, this is based on the number of amendments and the situation, the applicants, and there are, there are a number of choices available for the Planning Commission as a recommendation. Certainly, the extension can be, could be granted for any timeframe, you know, in between those three years and those 15 years. No extension could be granted, at which time, the building and the site are then not in, not in compliance with the conditional use permit. It would be then up to the city to pursue enforcement or not on that conditional use permit, because it's, one, it would be not compliant with the zoning based on the building size, and then, two, it's not compliant with the conditional use permit because the addition was never constructed. I did, I apologize, I did outline The other option could be a recommendation that the City Council elim, or the Planning Commission recommended the City Council the elimination of this condition that says you need to put on this 2,300-square-foot addition. Staff's not supportive of that, simply because it's, we're still then dealing with the minimum building size in the zoning district. That does not go away, whether this condition goes away or not.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Singh.
Mr. Chair, I think I will not be in supportive of that, because the B4 has the requirement for the size of the building. And if we're going to stick to the ordinance that requires that size, then to do this, I think, would be, would be totally wrong. So I'm not going to be even going in that direction. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Slania, do you, do you know what, what was the thought process behind the 10,000-square-foot requirement? It was obviously before my time, so that's kind of why I was asking.
Certainly. Just to get a substantially sized building down there, as I said, much of, much of kind of the B4 district runs along Highway 13. There's really a hodgepodge of buildings. Some are very small, just hundreds of square feet, maybe not even 1,000 square feet, and I believe at that time, the city was looking for improvements and investments along Highway 13 in that area, understanding that a 10,000-square-foot building could be multi-use or could be a large single-tenant user, a substantial investment, rather than just pockets of smaller buildings. There's also, again, I would say, a hodgepodge of lot sizes down there. So really, to support a larger building, some of these smaller lots would need to be combined, reconfigured, and provide a reinvestment into the area.
And, but, so, obviously, there's a bunch of smaller buildings that are still there, so if they, they were there, then they're fine, obviously.
Correct. Correct. If they were constructed prior to, I believe it was 2000 or maybe 2001, they are grandfathered in. 2001, they are grandfathered in until a natural cause would bring them down, or a owner would bring the building down.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, since this was approved in 2003, has any other approvals similar to this been done, where the council granted a condition to add to a building?
There haven't, I can't think of any additions to the building. There have been improvements that need to be made to parking lots, landscaping that needs to be put in. Most recently, I can think of the RDO project not too far from here, where there's actually a timing to remove the building and vacate the site. The difference with some of those is really, since this project's gone through, the city has started requiring financial securities upfront, so everybody knows what we're getting into, and there's some financial incentive to get the project done or where it needs to be. But I can say, Fairview Hospital, for example, I know they had a phased landscaping plan. They had security provided to us to make sure that happens over time.
Is the opportunity here to attach a financial requirement to this extension?
It certainly is. I put that in the report, and I forgot to mention it. If that's something that the planning commission would like to pursue, that would be a reasonable expectation if the planning commission wanted to go longer, or recommend a timeframe longer than that.
Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Slania, the existing building, how old is the building?
The building was ground up in 2003.
And the four-years extension that the council allowing is for basically 2,300 square feet?
Correct.
Now, between now and four years from now, and three years from now, there could be some changes to the city ordinance, city, maybe some plans ahead that not anticipated. Now, what if some unanticipated situation arise that could affect this addition between now and 2018? It's a long, many, I think there are a lot, from what I see, three, four years for 2,000 square feet is, you know, pretty loose, very loose. So, at that point, can the applicant come back and say, well, three years ago, we had this condition. Now, we are facing this situation. We are requesting?
That's a great question, Mr. Chair Commissioners. In a situation like that, let's say hypothetically, the ordinance changed, and that 10,000-square-foot minimum was reduced, the applicant is still bound by the conditional use permit until they would come back and request amendment, which is, I don't want to speculate, but certainly, that's what's driving this condition, is the 10,000 square feet. If that was reduced, the applicant would have every right to come in and request that that condition be eliminated, or reduced, or somewhat altered. But as you said, right now, you know, we're dealing with hypothetical ordinance amendment for the future.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Slania. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I would open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to step forward and have a question or comment, please feel free to do so. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Look for discussion, points, questions. Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think this project has been going on for quite a while now, and I am in support of staff's recommendation for, to recommend approval with the two conditions. The one, in particular, the one, the applicant shall increase the size of the building to at least 10,000 square feet by January 2018. Remember, this is a B4 area, and as such, that's a required size of the building. Obviously, the applicant, if things change, and as Mr. Slania said, if the ordinance changes and the size is reduced, then the applicant can come back and make requests. But I am in support of the two conditions that are recommended by staff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or agreement with Commissioner Singh, or disagreement, I guess?
Here, I fully concur with Commissioner Singh.
Commissioner Thomas?
I concur also.
All right.
I concur also.
All right.
Couldn't have stated it better.
All right, well, then, with that, I-
Was that, sorry, that was a motion?
No, no, we're just discussing.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. I was just going to say-
It's my honor to move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the application from Freedom Enterprises with the two conditions. One, the applicant shall increase the size of the building to at least 10,000 square feet by January 28, 2018, and two, no further extensions shall be granted.
All right, thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Singh, second. Second by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That passes 5-0, and we'll go to the council on July 22.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is any updates, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, it's not an update. It's just, we'd like to say welcome to Commissioner Benke to the planning commission. I know Mr. Benke has been around volunteering for the city in various capacities over the years, and having him on the commission, planning commission, will be an asset for all of us, because we can draw from his experience and continue to do a good job in making recommendations to the city council on matters within our purview.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh.
Welcome.
I think we all extend the same thoughts, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Anything else from Commissioners?
I do have one, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, just keep in mind, your first meeting in August will be appointing new officers, chair and vice chair, so keep that in mind over the next couple meetings, and we'll get that on agenda for you.
All right, thank you. And I think our next meeting is scheduled for July 28. Is that correct? Correct. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Bradrick, second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That passes 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.